Good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call the I'm not on here. There we go. Calling the meeting to order at 6:30 for the special meeting on June 15th for the Board of Education. And join me for a pledge of allegiance? Let's see, we have one online and we have one in the room. We are going to open for public comment. In lieu of time, because the administrators are actually on vacation, I'd like to limit public comment to three minutes. Jen, if you wouldn't mind taking time on that? Um, let's see. Do I have any public comment, I guess? Go ahead. Hold on, I just lost my meeting. Okay, go ahead Brett.
Thanks Brett Mastriani, 162 Button Road. I just wanted to touch base. I'm glad to see that you guys are discussing the administrative roles. That it's on the agenda and I was glad to see that the Board of Finance Chair reached out to have a discussion on this. To see what we can do when it comes to combining some roles or some duties. And I just, so we talked about it at our selectmen's meeting last night and I know you're having a meeting tomorrow.
Yes.
So I wanted to give you a little bit information of what we talked about last night.
I did see the recording.
And some copies.
Thank you.
I just want to reflect that this was passed in a bill in 2017 that allows the municipality through the legislative body of the town, so the selectmen or the town meeting and the Board of Ed to combine these roles or combine administrative functions. It's, I know there has been talk where it is up to the superintendent to do that. There is a state statute that allows the municipality to do that.
Yeah, I have it here. Thank you.
And I know it's always been a pushback to talk about these things. Actually, in the CASBO White Paper, it states that. It says, "There's a long tradition of New England not wanting to lose local control and there's our opportunities to be gained in reviewing various aspects of consolidation or shared services. The challenge is to keep the process free of politics and those looking to protect turf and/or build an empire. And the, basically, the planners should be united in their mindset of public first." I did talk to multiple towns that have done this successfully and it's worked out. So there are always some challenges in the beginning and I'm glad that we're at least going to have a conversation and I'm hoping that it's an open and honest conversation regarding it and that we're really looking at what can be done. Some of the towns that I talked to mentioned the synergy between the towns have never been better between the municipality and the Board of Education, especially when it comes to budget time. That was huge. If you talk, if you look at some of the, Monroe was one that did it last year. If you look at some of, I have a lot of papers here, sorry. If you look at some of-
Thirty seconds?
Of, thirty seconds left?
Yep.
Already gone through three minutes? Alright, well, I will pass these out to you.
Awesome.
And I think it makes sense for us to at least look at these. There's difference in the IT departments. There's difference in the financial and administrative offices. And if you look at this, this is the statue that it was presented, but there's also stuff in here that we need to do that we have to make sure we're not doing and these synergies can help. Like any new administrative role in central office, that contract is supposed to be posted on the website within a certain amount of time and we don't do those things, but when you have someone that oversees or works on both.
Thank you. Thank you. Alright, so a couple of presentations really quick. We just wanted to really recognize Robbie McCarthy for her time tonight and thank you so much. Thirty-three years, really, really exciting. We're going to miss you. It's going to, hard shoes to fill. You are North Stonington, so we really appreciate everything that you have done. And we'd also like to recognize Peter Nero, ten years, if you can believe it. This should not go in your bottom drawer. And then this is also on some dinner out from us as well. You know, just to kind of recap, it's been ten long years for you, I'm sure, but you have taken us from supporting the school project to when you came in cutting a budget by, I think, almost $400-plus thousand and keeping us at a really very level budgeting stage, being very fiscally responsible with our money. I appreciate that. You've certainly helped me grow to be a better chair, I think, under your leadership. I always look to you for advice, especially when it comes to legal and everything else. And, you know, the school wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for the work that you put in, so we really appreciate everything that you've done for us. You got us through COVID, the worst of the worst for anybody in teaching or administrating. You got us back to school sooner than most and kept a level head through the whole thing. So I just really would like to thank you for all of your years of service, Mr. Nero.
When I came here, I always think of that movie Die Hard. When he's crawling through the vent system and he says, "Come on out to the coast, let's get together, let's do some lunch." Because I really thought when I came here, I was going to walk out of my office at the end of the day and go over to the soccer field or to the baseball field and watch game. And I, I think I did watch one soccer match and one baseball game. And, you know, recalling back to my first, my second, third week here, I had to cut $388,000 of the budget. That's when the administrators learned the phrases, "nice to have but must haves." Then we had a situation in which we had a petition to close the school and we had to have, I don't know if you remember that, but we had to have a town meeting on that. And that's when we realized that the only, only board that can make a decision about open-closing school for that matter, and I appreciate what he was talking about tonight, but the Board of Ed makes a decision about what's right for the district and it was right for the district. I wrote the resolution that night. It's like, like two pages long to make sure that we did that. And all the struggles that we had, then we had Superstorm Sandy, which was at Halloween. Then we had the Nemo and every, that was all in my first year. But I, I've been meeting and talking with the new superintendent. I'm excited for him. He doesn't have any of that, there'll be something, you know. I mean, I had grubs one year. I mean, the grass getting eaten up, but I'm excited for Troy, you know, with so many things that we want to make sure that he knows that he has to do in his own way and how he wants to do it. So, you know, it's like, you know, the next phase of the district will come. He's a lot younger. I told him yesterday, the other day, I, when we were meeting with the me, Robbie, Deb and Suzanne, I said, "I just want to let you know Troy, I wasn't as thin as you, but I was a lot thinner and my hair was salt and pepper like yours when I got here." So the other day, when I filled out my driver's license, my wife said to me, "You can't put gray, it says white there." So I put that down. But thank you, everyone, and I'm not, not going far away, like, as we discussed the other day, even for weather events, Robbie and I will come in sometime in September to make sure he understands, you know, what the procedure is because he's never done that before. So we'll make sure that he knows how to work with the town, how to work with the bus company and not only that, for lunches, when we do early disviscels and whatnot, whether we're doing a grab and go, there's so many things I said, but it'll come second nature to you. So I, I'm hoping for, you know, huge success with the board and the next superintendent. And as I tell all Board of Ed, superintendent, really, is supposed to be the person running the district and I know how sometimes touchy it gets, but that's the bottom line for it. So give this guy a chance to flourish and grow. That's, that's the important thing. So, thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Does anybody else have anything they want to say, Mr. Nero?
I would like to say that it's been a real pleasure to work with you, Peter, since you came along in 2012. I remember the first time I really met you is I got called down to the superintendent's office for talking with Icons was just coming about and I was really excited and going to the Board of Finance and talking, talking for the administration and you're like, "Can you come down here, please? Don't do that. Talk to me first." So, but you've always been really supportive, you know, through Icons, you were a big support there and you recognized that our town wasn't communicating as well as they should and so you applied for that grant, the community conversation, and you really got the ball rolling. And I'll just always remember and appreciate you for that. You've been a real constant and I wish you the best.
Alright, so we're going, oh, go ahead.
Peter, I just wanted to wish you good luck and you and Linda have the most wonderful retirement.
I told the faculty the other day, if my wife should kill me within the first month I'm retired, you can all go to court and testify on her behalf. So, I love her. She's like the original hippie chick and I'm just so fortunate to be married such a wonderful person. Thank you.
Alright, so we do have administrators' reports tonight. You'll see there also, we were going to have some discussion on the non-lapsing account with them. They've sent us some of their priorities. I'll make sure I get that forwarded to you. I haven't had a chance to do that, but they are on vacation. So I'm going to let them report out. I'm sure some year-end stuff that's going to be exciting to hear about. Allison Mulane did ask to be excused. She's part of another meeting this evening that was really important for her development, so she's doing that. And certainly you guys can buzz on out as soon as you're finished. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that working? Can you hear me?
Yep.
The end of the year was a whirlwind. I, I don't know if we really thought about June 10th being, you know, as short into June as it was. It felt at the end, we were, how are we fitting all of this in in the amount of time we have left? But I am happy to say, everything went phenomenal. Promotion, graduation, were both beautiful weather events, which helps obviously with those ceremonies. We had so much to celebrate. We actually had three juniors this year for the first time who were successfully certified at the Westerly Ed and pipe fitting. We've done sheet metal, now we've moved into pipe fitting. They're opening the doors to electrical, I hear, next year. So we have a line of kids that are certainly looking to move into that as well. I said this, you know, times are changing and I'm really grateful that we have a Board of Ed that has listened to us the last few years because we did update our graduation requirements to fit that change. This year, we have about 52% of our seniors going to college, which seems, how is that, that number so low? But we have 40% that are going into the workforce. That's becoming, kids are taking their time, they're figuring out what they want to do. They're, they're exploring electives in high school, they're doing pathways, so it's been a great change. I also know it's cohort-to-cohort, that we could be back in the 90% next year. But I think it's just a testament to the freedom of a small community like this that allows us those partnerships. So I'm grateful for you all allowing us to make those partnerships. Next year, we have nine incoming Preston Volontown students joining the six that we currently have. So we will have 15 students in our hallways next year and I'm hearing that number is just going to keep increasing. I think the more, you know, we, we talk to kids and we, and we let them see the experiences they can have here, we're going to get more and more. And again, that's a huge testament for you allowing that to happen and I'm going to say with Peter, I'm going to miss you terribly. Your stories alone are going to live with me for decades to come. Peter taught me a lot about leadership, but most importantly, the compassion that's built into it. So I want to say how much I am going to miss him. Robbie, I'm not missing you because I'm going to see you, we're neighbors. If I have to bike to your house, I will do that. But thank you to the Board of Ed. We, we're ending on a really high note. I think we have one more position to fill, high school science, and then outside of that, it's a couple paras, building subs. But we had a great year. I'm hoping for normal. I'm hoping for quiet, the calm that might follow the last two years. And I do want to thank my staff. It's been difficult, but they've been amazing. They've stepped up big. And I couldn't do without Allison. She's another great addition. And I love my admin team to death. So I'm going to turn it over to Rob.
Field's that way, doesn't it? I'll be quick, I promise. So, again, we did, it's nice to kind of get back to some of the normal here at the end of the year stuff. So we did have our field day, which was fantastic. Ms. Perkins put together a great day for everybody. It was nice. We had families and parents, you know, back in and, you know, younger kids running around. It's what field day really should be. So it was so nice to see that back again after the craziness of COVID. We finally, we had a chorus concert for our sixth grade chorus and it was also the swan song for Mr. Noonan on his way out. So that was a really special kind of treat. And our, our sixth grade promotion, the weather didn't cooperate, but I think it was, we did it inside and I think it was a very nice affair. I think we really, I think the kids really appreciated it. I think that I hope the families enjoyed it, but it was nice. So those end of the year things were good. Love it. So we're excited about going into next year. I want to thank the board for all your support this year, definitely. We're looking forward to, hopefully we'll have volunteers back in the building again next year. We already had, kind of have some plans of what we'd like to do with some of our volunteers academically and for social stuff. So hopefully we will be able to get those back in. Robbie, thank you for everything. You always just an email away and I always appreciate your support as well. Peter, I don't know what to say. You will forever be my superintendent. You were a friend, you were a mentor, whatever I needed, you were always there for me. You made sure that I was supported. You made sure that I knew what I had to know and if I didn't know it, you were very patient with me and as I tried to figure it out. So, I'm always appreciative of that and I know it's not goodbye because I know I'm going to see you at the beach and, I mean, we're right down the road, so I'll definitely see you. Yeah, that's right. And finally, again, like, first of all, I want to thank my staff for a great year. COVID was crazy. I threw a lot of curveballs at us, but they handled everything in stride and I'm really hoping that next year we'll, we'll go into as much normal as we can, get back focused on academics and catching kids up and just being in elementary school again. So, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Can I say something about my administrative staff?
Sure, of course.
Hi. And when Rob came on board and now Allison Mulane, I've never been happier. You guys are great. You're kid-centered, you work hard, you always do the right thing. I am so grateful. The other thing that I'm grateful for is that in my second year here, I had Don MacRino here. Because I was, came from a different environment than from around here and I really counted on him to, we kind of mentored one another, you know, as, as we were here. And it was because of Don that I put a brick oven, a wood burning pizza oven in my backyard. So when you ask me what I'm going to be doing, I'm going to be popping out pizzas like crazy this summer, so. But thank you all. You, you've been great and I appreciate it, so.
Thank you. With that, if you guys want to scoot out the door, we appreciate you coming back to the district for the night. Thank you. Have a great summer. And we're having a meeting next week. Alright, we need to get some, we've got several minutes to get approved. If everybody's had a chance to look at those and we can just go ahead and get motions and seconds on those.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting of April 27, 2022.
Can we, can we do them all together?
It'll be just as quick to go through.
Okay. I second.
Okay. And just for discussion, that was just a correction that was made. And that's highlighted in yellow, that the request was made to have Mrs. Martin compare salaries for nursing staff at both schools with other schools in our dirk. Any other comment? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And abstained?
Make a motion to approve the Board of Education minutes dated May 9, 2022, special meeting.
A second.
Any other comment? Okay, I printed April 27th for myself five times, so I don't have those in front of me, but I did read them. Okay, all those in favor? Aye. Abstained? Say nay? Okay. May 11th, special meeting?
Was there May 11? Robbie? Must have missed my copy, but anyway, I'll make a motion to approve the May 11th minutes of the meeting.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And abstained?
Make a motion to approve the May 18th, 2022, special meeting minutes?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And abstained?
And finally, make a motion to approve the May 25th, 2022 minutes?
A second.
And any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? And abstained? Okay, Mr. Nero, do we have any correspondence? Great.
So, just to let you know that we had-
No, but I will go right, I will go right into personnel. So we had one position for a resignation for a paraprofessional. And that person will, that we're hiring is Tahida Stackholm. And she will also be doing the, be the parap for summer school this summer. Okay, so she will be assigned to the sixth grade at the elementary school, because that's where the need is, okay? You may recall, we had a resignation probably about three or four months ago, okay? Now, regarding the positions that we have open in the academics, and I know that, I'll do a drumroll for both Jamie and for Chat. Okay, we have a third grade excellent teacher who is Corinne. Who else? Phil, you have, Phil, you know, every once in a while, you know, we have kids that graduate. How, you have a third grader? I didn't know that. Okay, so I apologize. Okay, but it's Corinne Burnett. She is coming to us from New London. Rob, of course, I met with her too. Rob tells me her recommendations and her, his calls out, they were excellent. She is a, I believe, an army brat, so she's been all over the, all over the world. Her husband, I can give you all background information. Her husband's an engineer who works at Electric Boat. Great, you know, I walked in, what did I say, Robbie? What did they hire him at, 12 years old? And she said, "Mr. Nero, I'm 26." I mean, energetic, you know, clear-headed, just someone you want for third grade. She's coming at the Ford Step Bachelors out of New London. She has three years of experience. Next, we have to fill in for the hat-toy position. Again, the third grade position was a lot of bumping and moving around, okay? Fill in for, for Hat Toy, who is the eighth grade teacher. We have, we're hiring, her name is Catherine McGuire. Catherine comes to us, I believe she was in the same situation. She was in New London, excuse me. She was with Warwick Public Schools and she's been there. She's coming in at step six, bachelor's degree, teaching English. Again, when I got the phone call from Kristen and Allison, Ray asked, they said, "You got to meet this girl. If you can fit her in today, fit her in today because I don't want to lose her." So she came in and I, again, the great part is if you go into Junk and Java, she works there. I said, "Don't quit that job because we're always looking for a free cup of coffee." Only kidding. But I, I always tell the youngsters, work. If you have a part-time job, stay with your part-time job as long as it doesn't interfere. So she works as, what do they, do people, what's the technical name for people who pour coffee? Versta, yeah, that's what she is. Really nice. We, we really lucked out. We have the one position that's open, which is chemistry and physics and we need to fill that, which will be a little bit tougher than the other positions to fill. So I think that will be it and Kristen, as you heard tonight, has a couple of paras that they have to fill. So, but we're on, we're in a much better place than we were last year and certainly a much better place than we were the year before. So it looks like the job market is, and we are a very appealing place. When I, when I talked, especially with Corinne, I said, you know, "It's a little different than in London." She goes, "I know." So, I know, so anyways. Okay, so I'll go right into the superintendent's report, which, let me just say this, first of all, me, Jamie, and the grounds person, as well as Willie, we all met with the principal over at the elementary school. We have found everything. Nothing was, nothing was missing except for the squares, okay?
Yeah, I can't find them.
Can't find them. So that would be the only thing we have to purchase, okay?
Well, no, we have the pavers. It's just the artwork that the kids had done on them.
Okay.
So I'm not sure where they are.
I, I can't say if she did or she didn't.
Yeah, she can keep them if she has them, but-
But we found the, the wag of the train. We found everything that was there. So we met with Willie. Willie's got some, I told him to go out right now and purchase whatever the playground is needed for next year for, for the opening of school. There's a few things that have gotten loose and some things that need to be repaired. I told him, anything that needs to be done, don't wait, buy it now because we have a few dollars in that account to do that. Also, he's contacted the company. They're going to come in, Playground Medic, to come in to do the annual inspection sometime. They'll, they'll call us and tell us when they're coming in. They come from New York someplace. But I think we did very well that day, didn't we?
Yeah, no, it was great. So we found things. We found the steering wheels, the drums, everything, and I think we pointed it out. So, yeah, it's just making sure that we follow up on them and that they get done before school starts.
Yep. Other than that, again, you heard me say, I've been sending emails to Troy, talking to Troy. We had him in this week for an hour and a half. I have a meeting with him and, and I told him that the quicker that I'm away from you, the better off you're going to be, and I don't mean that in any bad sense. It's like when I took over as principal in some place and they had someone with me or as an assistant principal, you want to make it your own. But I said, certainly, there's a lot of institutional knowledge that both Robbie and I have that we want to give to you to use if you feel, if you, if you feel it's important. So even, as I said, even for snow days and things of that nature, making sure, I told him the importance of the PTO, the North Stonington Ed Fund Asian Fact. I got the, the credit, the community credit grant today, which is important to us. I sent that off to Troy and I sent it off to the entire district today. So just keep him abreast on things and I told him I would more than be willing to, happy to commit at any time for any situation that he has. We're actually meeting next Tuesday with Kate Erickson from Lurin, as well as Jack Kors, because Jack still does consulting work. And, you know, obviously, Jack has the vested interest because he has a great child here at school. So just to let him know all the services that, that Lurin has. The other thing which is important, him and whoever the new business manager will be are two voting members of, and that's, again, I, I understand the idea of joining forces on things, but we've been the instrumental force behind the, the co-op we have for help here. So those two positions, the two votes that we have in this district are very important for the ongoing, that, that program. So he, he was supposed to attend the meeting on that a couple of weeks ago, but he had, that was right after the unfortunate situation in Texas. So we had a decline on that, so he had to spend some time at school. So whatever he needs, like I said, I'd be more than willing to help because, as I said, we're leaving, I'm leaving, but all the people that I've worked with, administrators and teachers and everybody else, paraprofessionals, I, you know, we want to make sure that they're all going to be in a good place and that's the important thing.
Thanks, Peter. Just, most of the things that I have to discuss with everybody falls under new business. So I do have an 11 o'clock conference call with the CAE board chairs. We've kind of taken recess from that for a couple of, maybe about a month or so. CAE did elect a new president, I think, if you guys saw that. Rob Raider has left after many years. He was really a great asset and I think Patricia will fit right in really well. She's been there for a long time. So that's at 11. I am, as Brett talked about and will talk about further, meeting with the Board of Finance Chair, Board, the first selectman and with Troy tomorrow morning at 8 o'clock to kind of talk about collaborating and what we can do there and what the future looks like for that. And I'm certainly looking for your feedback when we get to new business under that. And that's really all I have, other than, you know, the things that are going on with our RFPs and obviously, lack of staffing over at the central office that we're trying to work on right now. Let's see, committee chairs, is there anything right now? We haven't really done any subcommittee work. I think we decided we're going to wait till July, right, till we do our, start our workshop and start really focusing on the strategic plan. Getting back to focusing on things like education and our students, which is going to be really exciting. So I'm looking forward to that and I think we have that slated for July 13th, if I have that date correct. Alright, is everybody else here? If we can get a quorum at least. I know that date worked for Troy too. So, and that's going to be a morning meeting. So we'll talk about that as we get a little bit closer. Oh, was it, oh, it's a regular board meeting, right? It was going to be our regular Board of Ed time? Okay, perfect. You're on travel as well? Alright.
Is it possible to, to see if we can reschedule that meeting?
I can-
That's a difficult day for me too.
Okay.
Not to say that I could not be here. I could, but it would be difficult.
I can reach out to Troy and see what other options he has and then I'll shoot you guys an email with a couple of options. Okay, how about that week? Does that week work for everybody? Maybe a different timeframe? Maybe a different timeframe? You're out that whole week? How about the week after? The 21st, possibly? It's a Wednesday again? Oh yeah, if I do my math right, right, the 20th? All right. The 13th is our regular meeting. We only have one in July, right? Well, let me reach out to Troy and see what works for him as well. I know 13th is what he had on there, so we'll, we'll figure it out, all right? Okay. On the 13th or the 27th, you mean? Okay.
So the website does have both the 13th and 27th currently as regular.
So the 27th works for everybody except for Steph at Chat. All right, I hate to pull you away from your family vacation, but it is only Iowa, Chat. All right. All right. I'm just kidding. All right. Right. I know, I go back to North Dakota in the summer, I know how you feel.
For me, the 13th is better than the 27th. The 27th, I'm having surgery.
You're where?
Having surgery on the 27th. But.
What kind of surgery?
Just on my foot. I mean, I could still do hybrid probably.
All right, let me see. How does the 26th look for anybody? Is that, that's a day before your surgery? All right, sorry. All right, let me see, it would, it's going to be strategic plan workshop anyway, so we can just make it a special meeting. I will reach out to Troy and see about the 26th, all right? It'd be nice if we could all be there for it, because it's, it is going to be some good planning moving forward, so. All right, I'll let you guys know, okay? So that, we're going to cross, and Lurin, I did not get to. No. So currently, it's set as a regular Board of Ed meeting. I don't know if we'll need to have that or not. All right. Especially if we're going to have quite a few absences, we may just be able to cancel that meeting, we'll see. Because I have a sense we may need to add another meeting here in June, with everything that's going on, and the switch over and everything else, so. And if we have to do that, Peter said he could maybe join us hybrid, but he's going to be out, right? So, all right. Nothing with Lurin, I didn't, I wasn't able to attend that meeting, that Thursday morning meeting. But just keep forwarding those to me, Phil, and I'll try to get them in when I can, okay? So that brings us up to new business. Brett, thank you for sharing tonight your information. It's a lot of the same information I read today as well, so I appreciate that. You know, we do always want to try to work and collaborate. I think, you know, we are bringing a new superintendent in with the, trying to bring in the business man, replacement for our business manager, obviously a bookkeeper. And it's important to see what we can do to work with, with the town. So I will be meeting with the Board of Finance, again, like I said, tomorrow, and Selectmen. I just kind of want everybody's feeling for that. I really have my own feeling about where we can go and what we might be able to do, maybe not do maybe immediately, but, you know, things to keep our doors open. So if it's okay, I'm going to start with Jen and just kind of go around and see if you have any comment or any, because I want to be able to take your feedback over to that meeting tomorrow.
So my thoughts, as you were introducing the topic, were that, of course, it's a balance between making sure that the Board of Ed and the schools can get done what needs to be done, to be efficient. But also, of course, to look at possible savings that benefit the town overall. So I don't know how that balance works out, but we have to, of course, keep that in mind all the time. And we, we need to toss out maybe things that we've done in the past and just always, you know, like, what's, what's the best thing for the town and the school to get? That has to be the guide. And that's not much help, but.
So I agree, I think there needs to be a balance with saving some money where we can. My biggest concern is that, from what I hear from Deb's position, is that she has a lot of responsibilities. And I want to make sure that we honor those responsibilities and we set Troy up for success. So making sure that, kind of what Jen said, everything is being met. And my concern is that we may not meet that in a shared position, at least with the business manager, but maybe with another position, such as the bookkeeper.
Thank you. Chat?
So, so I, I had looked into this some myself, because I wanted to get some more information. And it was actually spurred by a comment that Peter had made at our last meeting regarding the idea that, because of the fact that, because Preston was referenced as, as something that, you know, oh, they do an 80/20 there. And Peter had said, yes, but they have in-house transportation and in-house food service, which seemed counterintuitive to me. That it seemed like if we were contracting out, there should be less work. And so I, I looked into that and I discussed with our own Director of Finance in Preston to get a better understanding. So I just wanted to share that with the board, because I think that that, that matters a lot. We in Preston have a Director of Transportation, and we also share a Director of Food Services with Griswold. So we have two other administrative positions that are in play, because we have in-house transportation. So there, if we have a problem with transportation, that call goes to our Director of Transportation and never touches central office. It's going to the bus garage, it's being handled there, and all of that gets taken care of. Whereas if you have it contracted out, any issue with routes, any issue with drivers, any of those pieces of things come to our central office. And they get handled by somebody in central office, in our case, our Director of Finance. So that's a common model, and the way that a lot of schools do it, where that transportation contact person is your Director of Finance, so the one who has to do all of the different things. And weirdly enough, again, something that doesn't make sense in my head, but if we're contracted out, there are far more hoops to jump through for both transportation and food services than there are if we have it in-house. Whereas we have to run a bunch of different reports, and there's all of these different things that that Director of Finance has to do. And I think that perhaps looking at it, when we're comparing, we need to make sure we keep in mind that every school district with every little piece is incredibly different. And the way that we're, we're looking at it, comparing between districts, can be a very hard thing to do. And I think that we instead need to make sure that we're looking at the work that needs to be done and making sure that it's doable. And doable in a way that doesn't create a hostile workplace, where people are desperately trying to finish things that they don't have enough staff to do. So if you consider the idea that, yes, it's an 80% position in Preston, but we have two other administrative level people who are also handling things there. And granted, it's more, because we have in-house transportation. But again, they're not apples-to-apples comparisons. And I think it's hard to ever get an apples-to-apples comparison between districts. So I think the better path is to make sure that we're looking at what we need to get done and what looks doable during a general work week. And I know that, you know, we've, we've been told through Peter and Deb both, that the workload is incredible and that it's extensive. And I think that we need to value that and make sure that we are understanding that that position handles a lot. And if we're looking to change what that position handles, that's a different thing. But I think that in a moment when we're bringing in new administration, I find that difficult to do. Again, I would agree that a bookkeeper position, or a lower financial secretary position, or something similar like that, would be worthwhile to look at. And I think everything's worthwhile to talk about and at least to consider. But I think that it's hard to compare districts, because every school district has its own idiosyncrasies and pieces that come into play, so. Sorry, that was very long-winded, but.
No, it was, it was good information, and I appreciate you doing that research, Chat, thank you. Steph?
So I, I think it's always been pretty clear what side of the fence I fall on. And that is on the, oh my goodness, we should be having these conversations as frequently as possible. And every time a position is vacant, and especially when we're talking about someone who's sort of at the higher echelon in our district. I agree with Chat that every district and town, right, every municipality, is very different in their needs and how they do things. I have been able to, through Brett, see the research that he has done with the different municipalities, not the district necessarily, who are sharing, one of which has and isn't going to anymore, and a number who have gone to some sort of a dual role. And I think that my takeaway from it is, this should not be an effort to take our position and say, let's give this town position and this position as it, as it exists to one person, and this will be great, let's get this done. Like, the exact opposite. I think that the timing couldn't be better. I know that there's some nervous energy, and I know there's a lot of turnover. I just think that this is an opportunity, and we're not going to see another one, hopefully, in the near future, for us to say, how do we best set Troy up for success? How do we allow us to create something, because we're in a position to be able to do it, that's innovative, that's potentially really unique to our small district and our small municipality? And I don't think it has to be a compromise. And I would like to stay away from the term compromise, because I see it instead as an opportunity to have synergy. So instead of 10 plus 10 equaling 100, maybe we're going to get 10 plus 10 equals 1,000. Because when we all get together, and everyone sort of, and it's hard, because everyone will have to take a deep breath and say, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to trust here. Because for us, there is, there is this thing that was ours, that now we're saying, maybe we'll share, and that's scary. We have to work hard for our funding, for our positions, all of that. And so I know it's scary, but I think that if we can take the opportunity to say, what if we stop thinking about it, about like what Deb does, and what the bookkeeper does, and, and what the admin finance officer does? And instead say, what are all the tasks that need to get done? And how do we look at this and sort of reevaluate where those should be done? And is there room for efficiencies? Maybe there are some money savings, but personally, I would prefer to see better efficiencies. And so I think about things like writing RFPs. And I think, and Christine, I think Bob called you this morning about it. There was like a phrase in this RFP that, that referred to something that the town was going to do, but the town wasn't aware. So like, little things like that. And I think about the installation of the fence. Remember when we talked about?
Yeah, and Bob, I didn't talk to Bob about the RFP today.
I'm sure, I'm sure he'll mention it to you. I think it's just like an editing thing, not a big deal. When I think about the fence, and I think about like, so like Deb was stuck trying to figure out who's going to install this thing for us, but all along, like, we've got like, people of the town that could do it, but there's, there's not like a thing that joins us together for that communication. And I think it leaves us all stuck in silos. And so I really see this as an opportunity to say, like, what if there was that connector? What if it was just this natural flow of things? And I know that it's, it sounds very idealistic when I talk about it, and I talk about things like innovation and synergy and trust, and, and all those sort of fluffy nebulous things. But I really believe that if there's a place that can do it, and a group of people that could do it, it's here, in this town and in this district. And I think when I look at who the players are, who's going to be at that meeting tomorrow, I, I think that this is, this is the group that could get it done. And so I'm super glad that we're having these conversations. I hope that everyone goes into these conversations from a place of yes. And so like, sort of like, what's the pathway to getting something even better than what we have? I think that that scores us major points with, with our taxpayers, when we say like, we're always looking. And we're not just saying that we're looking and saying, yeah, we looked, it's got, it's got to be done this way. We're really working hard to say, how do we make it better? So I'm excited about the conversations. I appreciate that you are willing to take the meeting. I appreciate that Troy is not running away from our district. I really think that this is just, just a fantastic opportunity for us, so I'm excited about it.
Thank you. Phil, do you have anything to add?
I think it's a great idea. I'm just, I would like to propose that, and maybe you already did, like Deb's job position, the town's, their job position, and then I guess trying to choose who's going to do what. I don't know, I agree, I don't agree, we've always kept it separate. I'd like to have Troy make the decision, not us. It's going to come down to him, they're going to be working with him. I don't, I'm not in the office every day, so I don't know who's putting the most hours in, who's putting the least hours in, where, where do you cut? And then, I, I think in the past, though, I'm trying to think of, if, if there's an emergency, then who's making the decision? Who's going to make the call? Did it town call, did it school call? I, I don't know if there's a, if we have to decide on this right away? If this is not something to hold off till? I don't know. Do we need to answer now on this, or?
No, I, I think we're starting the discussion. I think it would be irresponsible of us to rush to make any decisions.
Correct, yeah, I don't, yeah.
And I, I'm personally, and I want to hear from the other two also, before I kind of say my piece with it. But no, I, to answer your question, we do not have to do this right away, and we do not want to do anything rash right away. We have a lot to consider, so, to answer your question. Lisa?
I certainly see value in, in having a discussion and to vet whatever scenario that there may be. Our first, obviously, our, our first commitment is to the students in the district. But we are also, should be mindful of spending, you know, mindful of the taxpayer. But before, I mean, I have an open mind about discussing. Like I said, I, I think it's valuable to discuss anything, and, and anyone who has any ideas, I think, you know, everyone should feel heard. But I would really need to know what Troy thinks, I would need to know what Christine Diaz thinks, I would need to know what it looked like. I don't know what it looks like here. I see an idea here, but I don't know what it looks like. I would need to know that, I need more information.
Okay, from my perspective, I'm open to anything. In fact, I did an MBA paper on regelization and, and the benefits and all that. And it's not always, the grass is greener, but, but there's always two sides on what's best to do and how to mix and how to put it together. You know, I think we tried a little bit of this with the IT help, which didn't really go that far. Maybe that's an opportunity to start, is looking at a bookkeeper, IT, and see if that somehow matches what both parts of the municipality are, are looking to achieve. But certainly, I, I would like to have Troy weigh in a lot on the benefits and what his vision is for the, for the district certainly. And I would like to review the process, the roles, responsibilities, who sets the priorities, who's the person that this person reports to? You know, things like that kind of weigh heavily on me, and I don't want to make this a real quick decision. So I understand the urgency, but nothing says we can't make changes later if we structure things in whatever way we need to do that with the employment contract. And I also suspect you're going to have to hire somebody else to, to help, because Deb Martin's here on Saturdays, I noticed her car here in the parking lot at night, early in the morning. So, again, we need to understand what the, the roles, responsibilities, and then what functions they serve. I know there's grants that need to be taken care of, there's a lot of reporting requirements that I, I understand. So anyway, I'm not against it, but I, I think we need to do a lot of homework to make sure we do the right thing that serves the district and for the town.
All right, thank you. So I, I guess having the conversation tomorrow is a good place to start, making sure we understand everybody's roles at the town side and on our side. Yeah.
I, I am 100% for the communication piece between the different boards. I think it would be wonderful to open up way more communication between the Board of Finance, the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Education. I think that's a wonderful plan. I just don't necessarily think it needs to be in this position, I guess would be my stance. But, but I think that it can be found in a variety of ways. So I would love to see that communication more. I think that trust needs to be built more. I think that that process needs to be built more, especially with the Board of Finance. And so I would love to see that moving forward, but I don't, I find it hard to look at a position that is full in terms of responsibility. and then try and share that piece of it. And if we're doing it for synergy and we're going to hire somebody else who's going to do the same thing on the other side and we're going to just cross those over, I guess that would be one thing. But I don't think that it's a savings piece personally. I think that we have a, we have a job that has a full employment. It's not, oh, Deb's sitting around doing nothing and therefore we can look for time there. I think we would either need to be hiring somebody else or we need to be filling in in terms of lower roles or something would have to come into play. And again, that can be in the conversation. I just think that we need to make sure that we keep all of the responsibilities in central office that our Director of Finance has in play need to be completed. And I don't see that there's a lot of play there other than just filling that into other roles. So.
Yep, yes.
So I'll, uh, say a couple of things and then I'll, I'll make a suggestion. First of all, I understand about what you're talking about. I was self-op food and self-op transportation, then I went self-op food where I was. So the difference here is when one of my bus drivers get pregnant or breaks a leg or does something, I'm not required to do any F M O A. I'm not required to fill the position. Uh, I don't pay workers' compensation when that happens and it doesn't hit my books. The fact of the matter is that in my other district, after three years, I had a $1.3 million deficit in food service. And yet when I went to, at the time with SEDEXO, like we have here, we have a $50,000. We have a very healthy surplus in, in food service, which is $50,000 right now. Okay? We can't use it for anything else, guys. We can't use it with tax because it's in a surprise account. It'll be violation of the law. I've done it both ways. There's advantages, as you say. But when my chef went down at one of the schools, I had to go up and find the chef to, to do that. And we don't have that problem. When we have a problem over here, when they're short on staff and, and, and food, they call Wesley because Wesley has Aramark as well and they come over and they help with stuff. We don't have to worry. I just want to make that comment about, same thing with Trent. No, I, I get it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. And so you say, it does sound counterproductive and I get that. But in the same token, me being on the other side, I know, you know, when we have a couple of parish go out, how we have to do to make ends meet, you know, to make it work. Let me make a suggestion. Because what happens is much as we try, we try to communicate on both sides, you know, with the town and so it becomes extremely difficult. I think you need to bring in a business manager, but I think they have to trade off their skills with one another. So in other words, you might, Alex, you said something about grants. If you blow the MOE, the maintenance of effort on your grant, you can lose your grant for IDEA for special ed the next year. That is something that the special ed director and the finance director have to be tied at the hip on. Because if there's any mistakes, it has to be rectified. If the state sends us, they're concerned about something, we have to look at it in the press. Okay? I, I, if there are skills that could be traded back and forth now, if one person goes on one side, you have somebody that can step in from either the town or from, from the school department to try to help in that situation. We run IDEA Title One, IDEA Title One, Title Two, Title Three and Title Four. Those are five grants. While there's small money here, like, you know, my IDEA was $26 million deficit before, you know, but it's small money here. I mean, to go from one last year, we, well, we're 1.7%, we'll drop you down to 1.3, thank you very much. The, the $65,000 that it dropped down was huge to us, you know? Fortunately, Healthier turned it around, okay? And again, and, and I saw emails going back and forth and it bothered me with the fact that the town has run deficits in the last two years. Think about that, if they're going to handle our books. There's been a deficit the last two years and it's forced us to alter our budget because we have to make up for that. And they spent our ECS funding as well. And when we were short on special ed dollars, we had to take it out of our own health to pay for it when it's the town's responsibility. So while I get to start collaboration, education comes under many more federal and state regulations than the town does. But again, I'm walking out the door. I'm just worried about what I leave behind, okay? So that's my two cents. But if we could get them to trade some skill, I mean, I ran $133 million budget where I was before and I think the town side was, I don't know, maybe, I don't know, like $110 million. But our business manager, uh, my business manager, my chief financial officer, got together with the towns pretty regularly to where were we on these things? We don't, again, we just don't have the opportunity to do that. Alex, you're right. You come here on Saturdays, you come here at six o'clock in the morning, she's here. And that, and by the way, I've had excellent business managers, once she was married to, okay? I've had excellent business managers, but when it comes to where am I on February 1st? Am I where a surplus, a deficit? And we've won 10 years without a deficit here, at least the 10 years that I've been here. She's right on the money in terms of the dollars and cents. And again, you may not get that with the next business manager, but again, that's my two cents.
I do think, Christine, it's really important that we, we correct one thing about what Peter just said on the record. Peter, you, you were talking about the deficits that the, the town has run and, um, I don't want to speak too much to that. Uh, but I do want to speak to the fact that you said that we ha- we incurred special education funds and we had to take it out of our insurance surplus rather than go to the town. I think that really what happened was we as a board decided, because we had that money, we were going to utilize that rather than going back to the taxpayer because they would have to. We weren't forced to do that. We can't be forced to do that. The town would have to that. But as a board, we made that decision, being good stewards of our town and our finances.
You did a wonderful thing, you really did. But the bottom line is the town is responsible for every overage in special, every deficit in special education. And that's the state law, okay?
Right, but saying that it was their fault and that they forced us somehow to take that money, I don't think is a fair assertion to me.
I'll agree to disagree that they spent the ECS funds. I'll agree to disagree.
So in, go ahead, Phil.
Is it just the business manager position they're looking after?
No, I think what, I think what we're looking to do here is just start at a place of collaboration. Um, I think we need to, we have some opportunities here. I know it's very easy to say, oh, look, there's three openings over there. How do you grab that up, split it out? Or, you know, I think what we need to do is really, for me as a board chair, I'm feeling for some reason distrusted, which is hard for me to understand. Um, I've been nothing but forthcoming. We've all been nothing but forthcoming. We've offered to the Board of Finance several times to come into their monthly meetings to share information on our financials. Um, I think we've done a very good job with our budgeting process. This last one was really successful. We got it passed the first time. Our ask was quite small, um, in consideration of contractual needs and everything else. Um, thankfully to the savings we're seeing on the health insurance. Um, so I guess I'd like to just go to a place of understanding of how do we work together? Can, let's, let's really work together and instead of questioning and distrusting, try to understand each other's perspective.
So what's the motive though? I know it's to save money. So the, is, do they not think that the business manager is not putting in the 40 hours?
I don't think that's it. I think it's just that, is there an opportunity here to share some services? And certainly we can look at that.
I don't know, were you at the meeting? I actually, I, I here asked Christine to reach out to Bob to look into it. So when you say what's the motive, I just, like, I want to take responsibility for like saying, like, from, from Marrow here.
I'm asking, I'm not, I don't understand what, what.
So I don't think that no one came to like try and poach, I don't think.
So I think, um, Phil, what we want to do is very, more than likely, there will not be a huge savings to our taxpayer. So, but let's not say there won't be. Let's just look at what the options are. Let's get the open lines of communication going. Let's, you know, I, since Brett was elected, he's been coming to almost every meeting as a selectman. Uh, Board of Finance has yet to send somebody to the meeting. So I think that to understand what we're doing here on, I mean, look at how many meetings we've had in the last two months. I mean, we've been meeting out. We're doing a lot of work and I think if we can all understand each other and what work is being done. Um, my concern is for Troy a little bit. So I think the board needs to decide, do we want to put on Troy's plate restructuring? Or do we want to put on Troy's plate education? And our students first. And what we hired him to do was to really dig into that strategic plan to build these, um, you know, uh, Kristin mentioned to me before the meeting, they've got some great ideas of how to do more collaborating and more things moving forward. So we as a board to decide where, what focus you want to put Troy on. And for me, it's always been students first, always. No other reason to be here. So if we can collaborate with the town to make the students world even better and work all of that together, that's kind of where I'm at. And I'm just interested to see, you know, have this first meeting and not rush anything tomorrow. Um, Jen, you had your hand up?
I have two questions. I guess the first one is, are there any models of a more, um, shared relationship between town and school in Connecticut? Does anybody know? And then I guess my second question is, where, where is the process right now for a business manager position?
Okay, so to the first one, there's all kinds of models. Some have worked, some have not. Um, it just depends on the district, like to Chet's point. I know one model Bob had mentioned is he was looking at a Brooklyn model because they have somebody that oversees finance and then there's different facets on both sides underneath it. Um, just as an example. Um, where we are at is we're inter- we're starting interviews. We have two, uh, candidates right now for the business manager and we are starting interviews on Wednesday, yes, at three o'clock. Yes. The bookkeeper position has only been posted. I don't know if we've, um, gotten any further than the posting at this point. Okay. Okay. Also, uh, Irma has been coming, started coming in. She's been working with Robbie. Uh, Robbie said it's been going very, very well, from my understanding. Um, so that should give, uh, Chet a little bit of comfort, not Chet, I'm sorry, Troy, a little bit of comfort. Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, we, yeah. So I, I think we need to be in a place of support. We have a brand new superintendent coming into, um, a skeleton of an office right now. We're going to try to support him the best he can. Peter and Robbie and Deb and everybody has been really, really great on making him feel like he can do this. But I certainly don't want to be in a position that two months from now, also, we have a superintendent that looks at us and says, this is not at all what you guys told me this was going to look like. I thought I was here about the education and the students and the strategic plan. I'm out. And I just want you guys to think about what that would look like as well. So, um, he hasn't sold his house yet, so he.
So what, what's, you have a meeting with Bob tomorrow?
Tomorrow morning at eight o'clock. Uh, Bob, Christine Diaz, uh, and Paul Simons.
Okay, so you maybe kind of lay out your thoughts together and maybe will committee be formed to do the review? Or, or are we just?
We could certainly talk about that, maybe doing some kind of an ad hoc or something like that as well. Um, Troy will be there as well tomorrow. So, and what I want to do is take all of your thoughts back to, to that meeting tomorrow because I don't want it to be coming from me, it needs to be coming from the board.
I, I just want to make sure we do this correctly without.
Well, I agree. I do, I, and I love what Steph says about ideas and synergy and all that, but this needs to be concrete. This needs to be solid. This needs to be, if it's going to move in any other direction, it has to be very, very clear on how that would look. And the, the players involved would need to really understand exactly what their roles are. Who do they report to? Um, everything like that. So I think there's a lot open for discussion and I think at this point, let's just start the discussion and not get too far ahead of ourselves.
I actually think, Alex, if you look through this shared services white paper that Caswell put out, you'll see that a lot of that stuff, because Christine, you're right, I am using those words to start the conversation. Because the minute that we have people come to the table with the same old beliefs, you get the same old results. But I agree with you, I'm not one that likes, um, uncertainty. And I think we've all seen, I've seen it, um, in the town when there's confusion about roles, reporting, that sort of stuff. This white paper seems to do a really nice job, sort of talking about how you set it up, how you divide things and what the language needs to be in terms of who's reporting to who and doing what to protect everyone's interest and making sure everything's happening. And what I do like, and I was totally unaware of the statute change in 2017 that allows the municipality and the Board of Education to work together to do this restructuring. And so while, while I think it's easy, I think it's low hanging fruit sometimes to say like, oh, we want to support Troy. We have to, I think, maybe look more globally at that and say, what does that look like? And our vision of supporting Troy might look different. I want Troy to be focusing on education. And so I think this is a great opportunity where the Board of Ed and the municipality can work together and say, how can we put together this piece so that Troy is focusing on education? And so I want to make sure that my comments aren't misconstrued as being non-supportive of our new superintendent, but helping him. Because when I, when I hear Troy talk and I hear him talk about, about his innovative visions, I want to make sure that we are doing our part to support innovation in our district.
Thank you, Steph. Yes? Thank you, Brett.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the opportunity is tantalizing, but, but on the other hand, you know, making sure that Troy has a rock solid start has to be really, you know, foremost in our minds.
Right, and, and not for nothing, Steph, but I'm not just saying I want to support him as a little, it's just a, a catchphrase. I really want him to succeed. I really do.
I just want to make sure that when we say we're supporting him, that it's not like this vision supports him and this vision does it.
Right, I understand.
I just wanted to say, um, I, I don't want us to, to think that we're not supporting Troy if, if we're having discussions. It seemed, it seemed to me like you were saying, is, do we want, do we want to support Troy and his success? Or do we want to do this? And I don't think that's really fair. I mean, we're, um, personally, I'm going in with an open mind and I need to hear from Troy and from Christine Diaz and from any other player that this may affect to see what it looks like. But I most certainly, as I think all of us most certainly, want Troy to be successful and feel supported and all that. I don't look at it as a choice if we have these discussions.
Okay, yeah, and maybe that came across a little bit wrong, so I, I appreciate that. I just, I guess I'm scared of overloading his plate right out of the chute is more of my concern, so. But yeah, I think we need to start having the discussions and tomorrow we certainly will start. So, um, I appreciate all of your feedback and I will definitely take that with me to the meeting tomorrow. And then at the next meeting, I'll let, you know, let you guys have a recap on that and how that went, okay?
Are we, are you gonna, are we changing the job description for the business manager?
Not at this time, no.
So whatever what is worked on tomorrow, it won't really, will it still be effective to the new business manager?
Well, we're not, we're not, we're just starting to talk.
I'm just asking, yeah.
Yeah, no, there's no, there's no plan coming out tomorrow. This is just the start of a conversation. Um, one thing that was a little bit different in the job description is that we didn't require the certification. However, uh, both of our candidates do have that certification, as to my understanding.
That's the O85, which is the business, business.
Yeah. Um, all right, so any other discussion on that? We're all pretty clear on where we are there? Okay. Uh, school safety. I just want to make sure I don't have anybody in the waiting room. Um, you know, in light of the recent events at the, in Texas, I always think it's a good idea. And I did have, um, a parent reach out to me to ask that we would just kind of touch on where we're at with school safety here. Um, I did ask Peter to maybe touch on that as well. Um, you know, we had brought, it was a few years back now that we brought somebody in to talk to us about that also. So what, whatever comments you want to share.
Yeah, so just to let everybody know, because I, I basically said the same thing in the day article and, um, you know, what the districts were telling that they were doing were basically all the same things. The fortunate part for us is, I'll start off with this. Uh, about, about seven years ago, uh, they changed the, uh, plan, the all-hazard plan. This is it, you will never see this, okay? Um, but there are the plans for the middle, high school and the elementary school for just about every kind of event. Uh, for example, for a lockdown, for whatever reason, I'll just flip over to this, okay? So the town has a hot copy of this and a CD of this and so does Emergency Management Service, which is Gary Barron is the Emergency Management Director. So this addresses everything possible that could happen in the school. Uh, I kept Troy in the loop because this has to be done over the summer and submitted by November 1st to this, to actually to region four, to my tablet. And, um, for example, when we got last year's, everybody gets a, what is called is a drill sheet log. And they were completed before the end of the year, which includes in this not only for fire, but for lockdowns and for, um, shelter in place. You know, we had to do a shelter in place this year. No one will ever see a copy of this, again, because this is confidential information. Uh, when we do drills and they've all been weather drills and I told Gary Barron, we really should have more significant drills that relate to possibility of someone being an active shooter in the building. We do drill for those things, but as a, as a district and town, we don't do that, okay? So we, they just had two weeks ago, the state just did for this region, a situation, a weather one. And I said, that's all well and good, but I'm not opening schools when a category three hurricanes coming here. I can tell you that. Or if we're going to have an ice storm, my, my, no one will be coming into school on those days. But I think they have to have it for some of the more prevalent events where they. My, my, no one will be coming into school on those days. But I think they have to have it for some of the more prevalent events where they, you know, again, where we meet together as a, as a group. So because we have brand new schools built, all our windows are projectile resistant on the first floor, seven feet, okay, from the first floor up. All our doors, and this is all a result of what happened in Newtown as a result of that situation. So schools that were in the process of doing, of doing building projects had to re-go back to the drawing board. Again, all the windows had to be changed so that an active shooter could not, so to speak, shoot their way into a building. It's only on the first floor. All the doors are solid, solid doors. And they're locked and they're able to lock that no one can get in. Again, all the drills reflect the fact that, no, if I, like when I was principal, if I knocked on a door during a drill and a teacher let me in, I would reprimand for that, okay? In no circumstance. We have all, all the different, and I don't want to go into too much detail, okay, as to what we do because that's, you know, this is being broadcast.
Quick question on the gymatorium, you had still some windows.
We still have some windows there. I wrote a grant on that, but they refused the grant. That may be something the Board of Ed, I think it was $18,000. That may be something you might want to think about in your non-Lexington town. Because our buildings were so new and because our buildings, the, the, the building project was so new, when the final reauthorization of the grant for safety, because I wrote one, we got, I think, $180,000 back in 2015. And that's the one where we got the raptor system and we put the magnetic doors in. That was only there until we did the building project. Now, obviously, they all are, they're all fab and everything else, you know, that they opened. But that may be something the board might want to look at is the, not all the windows in the gymatorium, but from the AD's office to, to, not where the music room is, well, those are all, again, projectile resistant windows, okay? You may want to look at that. I wrote the grant, they rejected it. They said, hey, we just gave you $40 million or whatever it was. Basically, we're not giving you that. Jamie?
So I just want to ask about the drills that we do with the students. So recently, what, from what I'm hearing is that many schools are really focusing on hiding and there's.
I'm sorry.
On hiding.
Yeah.
But there are cities out there that are suggesting that really the plan should be run, hide, fight.
Yeah.
And, I mean, honestly, I don't mean to be brutal, but if a kid is not there, that's the best chance. And so I want to know from a district position, do we promote running? Or are we focusing mostly on the hiding?
Well, right now, because of this, because of our buildings, okay, because we're protected from the outside and protected from the inside, what they do is they lock the doors and the kids are actually hiding in the classroom. To open those doors, I don't know how anyone could do it without, you know, a team full of slugs, you know, to be honest with you. I mean, take a walk through the building and see what they're like. I'm not to say that they can't get in, but there may be, and again, I think one of the, I had this discussion with Ronnie going back about a possible tornado and I said, well, like I said to you a little while ago, I cancel school during weather conditions, but I was driving three years ago on my way to school in the morning when I got to ADZ, everything was going this way in front of me and my alarm went on and my car notifying me. We had a tornado that passed through the rotary and took all the trees down past A&amp;H down to that way. So what could happen during the day? I said, a lot of what you do is on instinct at the moment in time. And I can't tell you that there's a canned way of doing this. You may be in a situation and the, and the, obviously the administrators know that, that if you're outside for PE or whatever and you're in a situation that, you know, that, that's in flow, you may have to run. That's what you do.
Jamie, I can ask at the Cabe chair meeting, because I've heard more about that as well, that, that kind of the sitting duck isn't always the best option. So I can ask them if they're hearing more about that coming down because, you know, most of the requirements that we do now were, were given to us from what was required and how to do it. But that doesn't mean that they're not starting to look at other ways.
There's, that was like a formal training. I know we did it at the college level with the, the high, run, sorry, run, hide, fight. That was like a professional training. But I just, sorry, just to go back, Peter, are you seeing that individual classroom doors are really difficult versus the outside ones? Is that where?
The both, the inside doors are solid, solid doors. I think they have concrete in the center of it. They're very, very expensive. They're very heavy. Okay, so those doors would absorb a lot.
Okay.
Again, the way that they lock, okay, the bolt that goes through is, you know, again, as a result of Newtown, that's what they did.
Okay, and the other thing that, I can't remember the name of the officer that we had come out and speak to us a few years back, but he said one of the most preventive things you can have in your school is a vestibule. Which fortunately with both of our new facilities, we do have a vestibule because it really does stop somebody in that corridor if they're able to get into that first space. So that was just something that was given to us as information is a really important piece. So some of your older schools don't have that, where now we do have that. But I will, I, I'm sure it will come up at the meeting tomorrow and I'll definitely ask some of those questions about that. The other thing is, I'm just wondering if you guys want to start just thinking about, is it time to start considering a security resource officer? And how would that look? Is that a retired police officer? What, you know, what kind of a situation would that be? We would need two, obviously. But is that something the board wants to start to consider?
I would recommend you consider that.
Okay.
The person should be someone who is armed.
Yep.
And willing to lay their life down on the line if the case should happen because that certainly wasn't the case in Texas.
I would be in support of looking into something like that. Just to what Jamie was saying, I think Norwich, if you talk to the Norwich chair, I think they have recently, over the last year, moved to that, like, get out, hide out, fight out model and they have those new trainers come in.
Yep.
And I spoke to a couple of teachers that said it really felt empowering to have a plan other than like get in the cabinet.
And that was at Norwich or at NFA?
I believe it's Norwich.
Okay.
I'm totally in favor of moving towards a model that we utilize as school resource officer. I know just as a parent, seeing Truma McCarthy there in the mornings makes me feel better. It's so silly. He's in a car outside, but there's something about it that makes me feel better. So I know that there's a feel-good component to it, but in practicality, I think about all the places around us that have important things and people that aren't soft targets. I think about where I work. I think about how hard it is for someone to get into where I work. So I work in a state building. I think about the people around me that are there to keep me safe that are armed, but you don't know. And it just, it's so low key and we're doing so much to protect so many people in so many places. But we sort of leave our, our schools as a soft target and I, I think maybe just as the world changes, we have to change the way that we view them. And so I don't think it has to be scary or, or aggressive, but I think our kid's safety is worth investing in.
Okay, so I, I will again talk at the meeting tomorrow morning. I'll reach out to Norwich and, you know, maybe start looking down. I don't even know how we go about looking for a school, a security resource officer. Do you have any idea?
Again, I, I don't know myself, but you might want to talk to the FOP.
Okay.
But I'm, I don't get someone, I mean, I think you need to get someone, you know, who's, like I said.
Worth it to get that safety coordinator to talk to us again?
Gary Barron might want to come. Gary Barron's going to tell you to put metal detectors in school and every student will be. I'm telling you right now, that's what he's going to say. Okay, but that still doesn't deny the fact that in some of these instances that we had.
I have to find his information.
Whether you had a metal detector or not.
Yeah.
You know, would help you.
Yeah, no, I have some, yeah.
Yeah.
If he came, I had some other questions I'd love to ask.
I'll have to.
I, I do think, I do think we have to be careful about where we have these discussions because I know, I, I know, as, as a teacher, I have a whole lot of information regarding what happens in my school in these situations that nobody else outside of the school knows nor should they. And so we, I, I, I think open meeting may not be the time for us to be really understanding what would happen at our school because I'm going to bet there's more plans in place than any of us know and there should be.
Ironically, when I was researching over meeting today, safety planning chat is something that came up as an appropriate reason to call an executive session.
Just to let you know that our plan is signed off by one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 different townspeople. Doctor, the, the town physician, everyone. My name's on it, the principal's named on it, the, the chief officer of the town, which is, you know, in the future. So everyone signs off on this. If they have read it, they understand it. If they have any questions, we amend it accordingly. It's done once a year. Now remember, we have a new, a new middle high school, so we had, there's a really design a whole brand new plan. The elementary school changed somewhat, but really it's the same floor plan, so.
All right, so we'll continue discussion on that. Under facilities and finance, obviously the admins aren't here. They did say one of their priorities was to get those cameras installed and secondary would be the curtains. So I think we should have more discussion with that after we close out the year. And, you know, maybe move in July when we have our meeting to maybe talk about at least getting those few things purchased. Okay? Yeah. Right. And we just got the information for the most recent budget spreadsheet. There's a lot of information on that. I would like the finance committee to meet prior to our next meeting to go over that. Take a week or so to process, ask questions. Deb is out until the 22nd, so we can get questions to her and she'd be happy to get back to us on that. Do you know when you guys would like to meet? Before the next meeting? So when would we like to schedule our next meeting? I'm thinking July, June 29th if possible? The 29th, that works for me. Does that work? Okay. Alex? You don't know, okay. If, if that doesn't work, we'll pick a different time for the finance committee piece so that it works for you, but for now, let's pencil that in. So would that be 5:45 for the finance committee? Yes, yep. The 29th, okay. I will get you some follow-up on the information I, I find from these meetings, okay? Let's see, and then that takes us up to policy. I think we had one we wanted to review tonight.
Yeah, so I guess with regards to policy, Christine, we have the advanced courses policy, the challenging curriculum policy, and then the gifted and talented students program. So we were waiting for Allison to give us some feedback on the third one, but Kristin and Allison say the first two are fine.
Okay.
So if you want to approve those, we certainly could. The other pieces, I did go through and make a list of all of the Cabe policies that were recommended for deletion with no combination with other policies. So it's, I'm sorry, it's not very fancy.
Yep.
This is a list of them by number.
Okay.
If you guys looked at the list or... I chatted with Robbie briefly. We're not really sure how to do this efficiently.
So these were all that were recommended to be deleted.
There's 177 that were just straight out recommended for deletion because we have a similar policy.
I don't know why I don't have that list. I know you sent it to me.
Well, I, do you have the, all of the documents from Cabe?
From, from the first audit or from recent?
No, I passed these out at a meeting not too long ago.
I'm sure I do. So I think what we should.
Oh, did I just do it electronically? Okay.
So I guess, would you mind resending it electronically?
I can do that.
And then I think if we can all go through them and maybe if you guys just mark the ones you're concerned about.
So I think, but that becomes a little, I just want to speak to that. We, we just paid an expert to go through our entire policy and say, this is what you should do.
Well, I agree, but I just don't want to speak for everybody else. I mean, is everybody in consensus on that?
I looked through the spreadsheet and honestly, almost everything is just redundancy. It references you to the other policy that shows. I, I, I have no issue with just voting to, to follow the expert advice.
Do you want to put a motion out?
There, there are a few where they suggest that there is perhaps a local decision to be made, but I did not include that on the list.
Okay.
I mean, so, I mean, Robbie made copies. I can pass this around and at the next meeting we could say, yeah, 177 gone. It's up to you.
Well, I guess I shouldn't specify that they're all redundancies. There's a couple that state, that state statute already holds it in place and other things, but they're all, yeah, they're all, they're all, there's nothing, and I, I, I did go through all the spreadsheet. I didn't read through all of the individual policies, but it, it's all, yeah, I don't know. Unless people think that they're going to go through them, I say that we eliminate the 177 and call it good.
Yeah, we don't even need to wait, do we? I think if we're in agreement that we have an expert.
I would, I would, I would make a motion to eliminate the 177 policies that have been identified.
So I would, we would want to frame the motion carefully in that all policies recommended for deletion due to redundancy have seemed to be 177 numbers. And then I think Robbie and I need to confirm that we have all of the numbers correctly. Would you put them all in the minutes, Robbie?
Can you do that right now before you leave?
All right.
So, so I would, I would make a motion that we eliminate the 177 policies identified by Jen Welborn as being eliminated based on redundancy, based on the Cabe report.
Okay, any other discussion? All right. Let's just make sure we get in the motion that it was based on the Cabe report. You said that, right? Yeah, okay.
Cabe audit, right?
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Wow, that was awesome. That was nice cleanup, nice cleanup. Thank you.
When you, when you go, sorry, when you go to our website in order to look at policy, when you click on it, it brings you to Cabe because Cabe hosts our handbook. And on the Cabe site, it is listed with old Board of Ed members and is not up to date.
All right, and then do we want to get a motion for these other two policies? This is our second read. Everybody's had a chance to look through them.
So can I do them both together, Christine?
Yeah.
All right, so I, I never do this. What do I say? Make a motion. Thank you, Alex. I know you would help me. I make a motion that we approve policy 6141.51, advanced courses or programs eligibility criteria for enrollment, as well as 6141.52, challenging curriculum policy. These are both new mandated policies that need to begin in the 2022, 23 suite.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Our calendar, I think we've discussed, so we're going to shoot for June 29th for our next Board of Ed meeting. We'll have to check to see if this room's available, Robbie. June 29th.
The day before your.
We'll make it nice and long. Perfect, perfect. We will take you that way.
Yes, I, I will be in attendance for any votes on that, but I will tell you that I.
It'll be hybrid, yes.
Yeah, if you're having a vote on something, probably I should be there.
Okay, and then I will speak to Troy about possibly doing July 26th versus July 27th instead of the 13th. Okay, and then once we get confirmation of that, we'll probably go ahead and cancel the 13th, but we can decide that at the end of, at our next meeting. I cannot do the 6th.
I cannot do the 6th.
So no, we aren't okay with that. Yeah. Right, okay. All right. Public comment? Brett?
I'll, I'll try to be quick. So first thing, Phil, just so you know where the motive, there was no motive other than now is the time to look at things because there were positions available, open. How can we, it's about restructuring and synergies and efficiencies, just like we're supposed to get some of the reconciliation from the school every month. The last one we got was January timeframe. And a few other things such as the RFP, you guys are going, I'll get into that in one second. But regarding your, talking fast, like my machine. The security things, I, you mentioned the vestibule and I don't know. And I don't know if this can be adjusted, or maybe it's just when I saw it, but when I was picking up one of my kids from school and somebody was, another child was going into school, when they opened the doors, both doors opened at the same time. So it was to, no, it was 10 o'clock. It was during exam time, but I just got nervous that... Okay, so I just didn't know if that was the thing. If you know it's a kid, they just open them automatically so they can go in. I just worried that there is quite a delay shutting it. Right. And then the second thing is, is there any way that you guys would look at issuing student IDs again? And this came up in town hall today because they're hiring for the rec summer program. A student ID is one of the IDs that they can use or a report card. But a few of the people that were there were freshmen that didn't have them because they stopped issuing them. It just, safety-wise, it'd probably be nicer for kids to have that for identification purposes if there were something to happen.
I can ask our IT department about that and what would go on.
I just would help them now, especially ones that don't drive that job, but I think security to be in the school if you ever had a lockdown and you had to make sure everybody was there or there were, whatever. And then secondly, regarding, I know Steph mentioned that she thought Bob was reaching out to you today. Is because at our meeting last night, we brought up, there were some concerns about the RFP for the grounds. And one of them was that the town would maintain the equipment if it were to break. So I know we do that now with a, a school employee, but we were concerned a little bit about liability. If we were to fix something, it breaks and that contractor subcontractor gets hurt. In that RFP, there's no indemnification of the town. It talks about indemnification of the school district, but nothing of the town. So those were a little concerned. And then I...
Can I ask a question?
Yeah. What's that? I haven't seen a written proposal, no. So... And my next issue was that you're going into executive session to discuss this. I was, resident reached out to me that requested a copy of the bids. And you guys said, according to state statute, you don't have to provide those.
State statute, until the Board of Ed approves it, it's still an item that's not be disseminated to the public. Once it's approved by the Board of Ed, then you can do it. But it's still technically part of the process until it's approved.
That's, that's your, so somebody made that decision here? So that would have been...
No, I, so I will double-check. I'm going to start just having us pay for our attorney to answer these questions because I'm not an attorney. But I do refer a lot of times to the school law book, the Connecticut School Law Book that we're given. And under the RFP portion, just bear with me, I've got a lot of stuff marked here.
I mean, the town, we do, and our bids are public. We just went out for a million dollars.
All right, so it falls under number six, under reasons you can go into executive session. And I'll just read it exactly. "There's no express position for confidential discussion of strategy or negotiations with regards to business contracts as there is with collective bargaining. Connecticut State General Statute 1210B24 exempts responsive bid documents from disclosure until contract is awarded or the process otherwise ends. Thus, public agencies can discuss bids in executive session until the bid is awarded. In addition, Connecticut General Statute 1210B7 exempts the following from disclosure," and it goes on to talk about real estate appraisals, engineering, all of that. So that's...
I totally understand that, but they are public unless you deem them not to be public. So the ending to that, and I talked to Tom Hennig, I reached out to him when a resident reached me, and I don't know if you guys know who Tom Hennig is, but he's...
Oh, I've always spent the bulk of six hours with him.
He's the FOIA guy for Connecticut. But he, he stated, so he sent me some samples. And you're right, if they weren't public, you don't have to make them public, but you, it, you have to deem them to be protected under FOIA provided that the chief executive officer of such public agency certifies that the public interest in the disclosure of such responses, record or file, is outweighed by the public interest in the confidentiality of such responses, record or file. So for instance, the town, when, once those bids are written, read aloud at the opening of the bid, which you guys did, so other contractors can hear it and other people can hear it, that, that makes it somewhat public. So I actually, when the resident responded that he couldn't get them, he did, he said, "One of the five permitted reasons," like you said, is one of them with 2, 1210-B24. So yes, if bid packages have not been disclosed to the public, then executive session would be entirely permissible. As to whether it's advisable, it's not really for me to say. It's entirely up to the public agency. I posted the two relevant positions of the FOI Act. But he said, "The important part is that you would have to deem that, that the confidentiality of it outweighs the benefit to the town hearing." So I said, that's, because I had a question about the town ones because we automatically make them public. So when we discuss the demolition of a million-dollar contract, we're discussing amongst ourselves, so our residents know what goes into it. But then he just said, when I said it was already read aloud, the bid opening, he goes, "Interesting, Brett." I think, and this is his opinion only, he wrote, "If the bids have been made public, then it'd be harder to argue that an executive session is proper. If the packages were only made available to other bidders, but not, but being withheld from the general public, then an executive session still might work, but it's a really close call." So I'm just wondering why you would deem this as a benefit to the community.
This is probably the most important decision since the election of a president. I have to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Alex, you've been, and Phil, you've been here the longest. We have played it every single, every single one this way.
We've been consistent, yeah.
We have done it this way. It seems to me that there's been a lot of discussion out there, and I'm not sure tonight if I have to pull this and reset it out again because I think there's information that has been conversed on this. And I told the bidders when we met with them, the only questions they're concerned you have were directly to Willie or to Deb, as it says in the, and if I have to answer any of them, I have to be honest with you. I'm really concerned about the fact that the confidentiality of this was blown a long time ago. But that's me. I've played it this way since I've been here. No one's asked me for the food service, uh, RFP, which we sent out last week and were waiting for it to come in, and no one's questioned me on the busing contract, which we've had three or four since I've been here. I'm just playing as consistent as I can. It's been very important to me in my transparency as I walk out the door to say I've played it the same way every single time. I just want you to know that.
And I'm just responding because people bring up to selectmen or whoever, certain issues. So I got an email today...
I spoke to the superintendent, superintendent said, "He follows the law that's written by Mooney, who's the expert on this, and that we'll follow it consistently right on through."
But it's your, but so you're acknowledging it's your decision whether you want to withhold those or not?
I'm following the law. That's my decision.
So you're just, so you're just saying that this...
I'm following the book and the discussion. I'm not going to go back.
Well, it's just a cho, it's a choice.
I also take a little bit of offense in the way, I feel like you're sort of like dangling car, like I'm taking my ball and going home, and you're sort of insinuating that, and I'm going to take it personally, Peter, because I'm the one who started these questions. And the reason why I started the questions is because I realized that this was going into executive session and we have discussed before a concern about not having enough information before we had to make a decision.
We don't have to make a decision tonight. We're just getting the information tonight.
But it said, award, come out and award the contract. So I thought, oh... I understand, but it's on our agenda. And so the first thing I wanted to do was get some supporting information. I had no idea the RFP was on the town website, so that was super helpful. I was able to find it. I was able to look through it. And I was able to identify some questions that I had about the RFP. Then I thought, I'm so sorry, Peter, and then I thought, okay, if we're going to, I'd like to look at these bids, but I also wanted to know, what do we currently pay? Because how do I know what makes sense if I don't know what we currently pay? And so I asked Christine, because I think as a board, we had decided that we're not going to pepper administrators with questions and we're going to send them to Christine, who would then send them to the appropriate person, and that appropriate person could respond to the board. Peter, I did not expect for you to engage in editorial comments regarding the bottom part of that email. No, you didn't in the email. I didn't pose those questions to you. I actually just mentioned to Christine, "Hey, I had a concern about this because I don't think it fits the prongs." And then as I looked into it, I realized, huh, it really doesn't feel like to me it fits those pronged approaches. And I read somewhere something that really, that really sort of got me, which was, "If you seem to be having a number of executive sessions, you should probably look into it because you're probably having too many." And so then I started digging. And when I started looking, Peter, the things that you responded to, and I want to be clear that I didn't respond with my information because I was a little concerned about the back and forth because of Freedom of Information Act rules. So some of the stuff that I looked into, that you were sending stuff about when you had executive session with the attorneys, right? The attorneys were asking questions. So that's a little different apples to oranges as I saw them, the examples that you were giving. And I understand that Tom Mooney is the expert on this.
It was an RFP example.
Right, but the RFP process, right? So they were coming in, you have RFP, we come out and award the contract. The bidders aren't here asking us questions. In that case, they were. And I am never a believer in subscribing to the idea that just because we did it one way in the past, it's the right way. I don't think past practice definitely always indicates best practice. So it was just some questions. It's, I look further. I find case law, Hartford Board of Education versus the Freedom of Information Commission, and how the Freedom of Information Commission, named back then, determined that the Board of Ed actually violated open meeting rules by going into a situation just like this. And so I thought that Tom Hennig's comments were actually really helpful in putting things into perspective because at first, you have to certify that they're confidential. And if you're certifying that they're confidential, then they're confidential. But you have to make sure that they are, right? Just like attorney-client privilege. It's confidential until someone else hears it, and then it's not confidential or privileged anymore. So how, number one, did we make that certification? Number two, if we certified it, should they have gone out to the board? Number three, when you had the reading of the bids, was that closed? Was advertised as closed? Now, I understand maybe no one was there, but was it advertised that way? And so if we didn't certify that they were confidential, then we can't sort of call it confidential on the back end. That's number one. You can't unring the bell. Number two is that Tom said that the reason why you would certify is because the benefit to the public not knowing would outweigh the benefit to the public of knowing. And so I said, are we willing to say that? Like, why? I guess, why are we saying that we need to do this in the public? And so Tom's saying then, if it was deemed confidential and, and the reason why is because of that balance, do you need to have it in executive session? Why do you want to have it like that? And so that's what made me think of it. So I, I do have a problem, Peter, that I feel like you're taking, you're calling my integrity into question. I just asked because it appeared on this agenda, and I'm allowed to ask questions. I'm sorry if they're offensive to you.
I'd like to hear from the rest of the board what you'd like to do about the RFP for grounds. I'm tending to believe, to move with Peter at this point, that we may be, this has maybe been a, we need to maybe move away from this completely, which is unfortunate, but...
I feel out of my depth at the moment. I have to be honest. As somebody who hasn't been on the board consistently and watching these, I, I would personally feel like if it's going to turn into a legal battle, then we need to include our attorney in these discussions.
Yeah, I think from now on, moving forward, at every executive session, meeting, we'll just have to have our attorney present. I don't know what he charges an hour, but...
Yeah, again, what I mean is that we have an executive session in Rhode Island. We have an executive session before every meeting, whether it's personnel or anything else, and the lawyer is present to make sure it doesn't go outside the boundaries of that. My only concern is because I've gotten emails from people in the last week that tells me there's a lot of discussion by vendors that is going on. My concern is the fact that I have someone who's not a town person, who has also participated here, and he could say, "Not be a play." And that's why I'm saying, I try to be as consistent as I can. It's been my motto since I've been here. I try to keep the board out of trouble. And if there's been discussion going on and I've got people asking me they want to see the RFP, there has to be a reason why they want to see it, okay? And I've never had that before, never, ever.
And I would say the reason that I would have liked it in executive session was for confidentiality of the person in the current position and for the bidder.
Well, why would it be confidential if we're discussing, I understand that he's an employee, but if we were discussing that employee, then it would have to be identified in executive session as a discussion of an employee. And of course, he would have the opportunity to be a part of that discussion, right? Per his rights.
Well, we wouldn't be talking about him per se, but it's his position. And so if we're talking about timing and everything else...
He knows about his position because he's a, right? So he's aware of that. So I think that the question here is not, is this valid?
We have to pull it.
Or not?
You guys can make a decision after July 1st and going up to bid. I will tell the present person to do it on a one-month basis.
Is this something that we should be voting on perhaps?
No.
I'm not sure why we're not discussing it.
My concern is for confidentiality at this point. So I think, yeah.
And let's make her make the call. No calls made tonight. We'll just pass this on and pull the RFP.
Or make a motion to go into executive session.
Are you kidding?
I mean, if you feel strongly about it.
Well, I guess the only question, I haven't read bids and stuff, and I do recognize the bidders, which I can understand why there's a little bit of angst or whatever, but is the concern, this process of executive session, or is it?
That's for me, the concern, yeah.
And using this as an example, as...
Yeah. I'm concerned about why we don't want to have conversations that are admissible to be had in the open, in the open. So Alex, for me, you know, I'm always a process person. It feels to me like this is something that we're doing, we're doing it behind closed doors, and we don't, we don't need to be doing that. And I feel like the less frequently we're behind closed doors, the better. I think transparency is so important. And I think that, that this is, this is just not, like, when I look at that balance, right? Like weighing, is the public's right to know or not know, like, what's more important? Like, I don't see why a groundskeeper position needs to be protected in that way. It doesn't, it doesn't fit. I think we can have this discussion in an open session. And Tom seems to agree.
So all positions in an open session?
No, I think, we just got to be careful, I guess.
No, it's about when it's open. And again, Alex, would be that balance, and it would need, we would need to have certified ahead of time that this was confidential as well. And so I'm, I'm just concerned about the process, and I would not want someone to say that we violated an open meeting rule.
Yeah, but it means that we need legal counsel, I think, to assure that if we do have something in executive session, that it's legit or, you know, it's just, it just opens up a bag of worms, I guess, in that.
Every executive session of the term.
That's what they're talking about.
I don't think it's necessary. I think the rules are very clear, but I think that we sometimes overuse executive session.
I guess I don't understand why we're even discussing this. Why isn't this just going to the low bid and done?
Well, technically speaking, under the law, it's not the lowest bid, it's the lowest requirement.
So I don't recall if the board has entertained RFPs like this before.
Never.
We don't write the RFPs. We leave that to the experts at the education to write that.
I don't even remember having them come to us for review after they've been opened. Am I missing something?
We've, we've done it with transportation. We've done it with, with food service, we always only get Airmark coming in.
With all of them across the board, or are we just picking some?
We have to do it with certain ones that are, this is one that we've chosen to do because we're looking at a different way to handle our grounds. So that's why we did an RFP on that. We were looking to move away from having that position be an employed position and outsourcing it. It would be no different than if we did it with any other position that we were deciding to outsource the work. Instead, we have to do a bid process on it.
Jen, to be clear, my issue was with the bid process or with... Jen, to be clear, my issue was with the bid process or with the RFP? It just is about whether or not we should be doing it in executive session?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I agree, Jen, I am totally befuddled by all of this. I, so, sorry.
Yeah, we got very lost in the weeds, for sure.
Well, and I guess I would say, I feel like every executive session I've been on since I've been on the board has been personnel, and there's been a lot only because we've had a lot of personnel.
Right, I would say if you looked at more than the last 12 months, but if you actually looked at the last five to six years, we don't go into executive session that often, but we have had a incredible amount of between contracts, sorry, I keep blowing into this, and personnel issues and turnover, that it just warrants it, unfortunately. So I don't think that we've been in inappropriately. And to Peter's point, in the cave manual that I read, that I've read as taking over his chair, a lot of boards will just do executive session prior to a meeting, which I feel is even less transparent.
And I think you would find, if you spoke to our attorney and Tom Hennick, the FLOI guy, would say that that's illegal, unless you're being very specific about what you were going in about. It can't just be, as we know now, it can't just be personnel.
No, it would be specific, but they're still doing it prior to meetings.
I feel like we need to just stop this discussion because we're not, we need legal advice, I would say, but it seems to be going nowhere.
I agree. So what do you want to do? Do you guys want to move forward with what's on the agenda? Do you want to take it off the agenda and hold it to the next meeting? If we do that, we have to pull the, pull the RFP and start the process over, because we did give the 22nd as a deadline.
Well, do you guys think the RFP is really compromised?
I sort of feel that it is, but I don't have any...
The intent was to compare contracting it out to continuing to have an employee do it. Is that, that's the...
Right, to look at three bids.
Why can't we just look at the numbers and see how they compare? Can we do that or not?
You can.
I think we should.
No? Peter's shaking his head no.
Yeah, I don't know, Peter, exactly either what to do.
That being the case, if I were to recommend someone, I'm not gonna recommend... I want to follow whatever rules you want, in terms of disclosure or whatever. Start off in the right track, Troy, on that, and want to have it so that go executive session or whatever, that would be considered...
Just for clarification, so you're saying when we put out the RFP for the dining services, that is considered confidential?
I'm saying that I feel as though, based on a lot of this, what's going on, it's confidential. People have contacted me to say, hey, so-and-so is very, very good. And that we told the people in there, they are not to contact anyone except through willing or to death. That's the way it's done. But, you know, so-and-so is a good person, this other person's a good person, and this person lives in the town. I'm sure that's been discussed, and again, if it's gotten to you guys, if it has, I might say that it has, but even based on this conversation tonight, I'm a little leery of the fact that someone who's not a town person who's gonna bid in here might say, I'm gonna take issue with the town office if it violates it.
Yeah, no, I agree with you, Peter, on this RFP. I'm asking about the other RFPs, are those considered confidential?
Yeah, we get it. A lot of times, what we have done, like, for example, when we do transportation, first, who did always bids on it, and everybody bids on it. They will come in, I think you've been on it too, they will come in and explain it. We think this was kind of a benign, you know...
This was a real change, yeah.
It's not like we're, you know, collecting a hope over here, we just thought it was, you know, that kind of a situation, perhaps. You might want to think of that, and the reason why they do it in executive session is because the other bidders are not in the room. We've sequestered them out, so I'm not, they're not saying, well, my transportation company, we're gonna do this, and they're listening to us. Or we can do one better, because then it violates, okay? So that's my opinion.
But that's not where we are in the process, right? So that part would be confidential, that's part of the process. When you opened the bids, right, when the bid, it closed, and you had the opening of the bids, when people could read the bids, right?
When we opened the bids, it's just for the bidders to say what everybody else did in the process.
So that's not a public meeting? No one else could walk in?
Because they're the bidders in the process.
No one else could walk in?
And again, I have never had anybody else walk in, and sometimes I don't have the bidders walk in.
Right, that's, it's just my question is about the process, and so if we...
Again, my thought process on this, that if people, if bidders have reached out, and this process is at this point, I have to be suspicious. And that's why I'm saying, it's safe of not getting filed, someone filing a complaint against the board, because if Diamond's gonna ask me the question, probably call me up and say to me, you know, follow me, you know? And I'm gonna say, look, again, I think I'm talking well beyond questions, well, yes.
I think you are conflating two issues. And so you're conflating my issue of wanting this to be done in an open meeting, with your concerns about people calling you, saying so-and-so is a good guy. I don't know how to fix that issue, I don't know how to deal with that issue in a small town. I imagine that those things happen. My issue is just about not using executive session when it's not necessary, and to use executive session when it's necessary. And if this wasn't properly certified as confidential from the beginning, then we do not need to be an executive session board. And so I agree with you, Peter, I think people will have questions, and so that's why I feel like doing this, having this discussion, now that we have the information, is appropriate. So you're saying that you had these people calling you, but you're saying that tonight you wanted to go into executive session, and everything would have been fine, but because I said I think we should do this in the open, now you want to pull the bid?
I don't think we should have done this in the open session.
We haven't done it in the open session.
I, again, to go through the bids and scrutinize the bids and everything else, I think we should have done that in executive session. And not in open session. And again, that's consistent with everyone that we've had right over the years.
And Tom Hennick is saying today...
Tom Hennick will tell you, not disrespect, but Tom Mooney wrote the book. Tom Hennick is the on-woodsman here. He's the officer. But Tom Mooney wrote the book.
And I think Tom Mooney probably would not disagree, because the statute that Christine references in her last email to us, the end of the statute says that it doesn't have to be in executive session.
And again, I will tell you this, in terms of our school discipline, employees, whatever, I've been consistent all the way through.
That would be in executive session.
You may disagree with that, but I'm sorry.
I don't disagree.
I'm at a loss here, so I'm going to, you know, I feel like we're splitting hairs. Yes, you can do it in open session, but you also can do it in executive session. I don't think, so I think it's up to you guys what you want to do moving forward. Do you want to put the bid back out? Are you concerned at this point about that process? Do you want to just go ahead and discuss the bids right now? Peter has said he's not comfortable making a recommendation. I'm just, I'm at a loss, to be honest, so I'm gonna kind of turn it over to you, Alex, on this one.
Well, this is pretty new to me, so I like to get some legal advice before I say something in public that I shouldn't be saying when we're doing bids, so, like, at least be coached, what's appropriate, what isn't appropriate. I understand that if that's what is normally done, I'm good with that. Again, I like to understand, again, my liabilities.
All right, so I can reach out to Nick. Peter, we have the 22nd deadline, that is to the bidders, is that correct?
Correct.
That we...
We don't take a vote on it at that point.
Would we have any leeway to reach out to them and ask for an extension? Okay.
Peter, I'm concerned that you're not comfortable making a recommendation, and that you're questioning the integrity of the process. And so that's probably something that we need to address. No, 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 I'm talking...
I've been questioned myself, and so has my business. Someone who's done a number of these in my 16 years, so I have to be honest with you. I've been, it's just as tough for the board as you have. That's why I'm saying that I don't feel comfortable at this point recommending any...
And your concerns regarding the integrity of the process. So you were talking about concerns that word on the street was happening.
Let's open in the room. We have two people in town who are town people, town persons, but we also have a person who has no affiliation at all involved in this process. Again, that's one of the reasons why I wanted to keep it confidential, because I don't want anyone to come back and say, oh, surely, this one, because someone on, this one...
So do you feel more comfortable on the 22nd, I guess is my question?
I don't think I would be.
Then I think that's something we need to address.
That's what?
Something that we have to address, right? We don't, why wait if you don't think you're going to be comfortable on the 22nd? It's a conversation about executive session, Peter.
So all RFPs would be in public? Everything is out, I've never heard of that, so I'm asking.
It doesn't say, the law doesn't say that it has to be or that it doesn't have to be. It says that if we're going to use executive session to discuss, not the beginning process, Phil, this part of the process, that from the beginning, Peter would have to certify that the needs to keep the information confidential outweigh the benefits of the public knowing. And if he certifies that from the beginning, so for example, that meeting when they read, they open the bids, right? That meeting, that would have to be closed, it's confidential, it should only be for the bidders, right? That's, it would have to be confidential from the beginning, and as long as Peter were to certify that, or the superintendent would certify that, and say that it outweighs the benefit to the public, then we could use executive session. Now, there are limitations to what we could talk about in executive session, but we could use it. My only concern here was that maybe we weren't doing that, and so, is executive session the right way to go? Because there is case law where it was found that there were FLOI violations as a result of Boards of Education going into executive session to do just this.
But, I, okay, I don't want to continue this conversation much longer, because I do believe we need legal advice in it, and that's gonna be the end of it, but I guess I'm confused, because I do feel like Peter's telling us that there are issues at play that outweigh, perhaps, open session, that he's saying that there are...
But the problem is that we missed one little step of not certifying it, and so now that just throws the whole baby out with the bathwater, because we're gonna get called to the table.
Well, but again, so, so I guess my question is, and what it appears to be, is we need legal counsel to tell us if this is a safe move to make, but to me, it seems like it made sense that we would be in executive session to be able to discuss things that might create negative situations within the town, but it's just that we missed the fact that it wasn't...
Certified.
But it's never been an issue before.
It's never been an issue that anyone has addressed before. And so I'm sorry that I brought up the question and that it was so offensive. I didn't think that it would be that controversial.
So I would like to get legal counsel, to know if this can be done.
I would ask that as well. I just want to make sure going forward that we don't get into this again. So that's why I asked the question about the other RFPs that are out, so those we are...
We don't have any others out now.
The food service, so that one is certified confidential. And so we should be okay to be in executive session, that one will be an open session, right?
That'll be an open session. Okay.
Do we typically certify anything prior? I mean, is there a difference between, is there a difference?
Yeah, so...
Is there a difference between tonight and the food service and the transportation and anything else that has been done over the years? Is there a difference in what the process would be?
I would have to go back and look at the process that we've done on each RFP, I don't know.
So it's not normally?
We've never come across this. We missed the certification piece, which obviously is a huge issue. So we need to talk to an attorney, figure out if we can go into open session with the current bids that we have, and if that would be okay, or verify with him that because we were wanting to do it in executive session, because we were concerned about confidentiality, if we should just stop this RFP process and put it back out for new, certify it when we put it back out for new as closed bidding, and then put it in executive session the next time around, is my understanding, and if I'm clear as mud, right? So let me talk...
I would agree, I think, I think at this point, all we do is put out the RFP again.
Okay, so...
I don't know, I don't know if we need to vote on that or what happens, but I would say at this point, that's what we would do.
I would say then we'd need...
If that isn't gonna change, then we have to, we have to do that. Peter's saying that he's never going to make a recommendation about this.
No, what I'm saying to you is, I'm just particular to the way, the way this is what I call it, especially for my, I...
So we would need, I think, a motion to pull the current RFP for grounds, and then, at our next meeting, we could put through a motion to put out a new RFP process, certifying ahead of time that it would be confidential, so that we could do the process to save confidentiality... Or not, either way, but we can decide that when we put the RFP out.
But either way, it feels like this process is compromised and is not going forward well. Then I would make a motion that we pull this RFP and reissue it for grounds.
I second that.
All right. Right, so we have no proposal for executive session at this point, so... So yeah, I guess under item number 14, we won't be awarding a contract tonight. We were unable to go into executive session, and so we have a motion on the floor.
I second that.
Sorry, I make a motion to pull the current grounds RFP and reissue it.
And I second that.
Can we not vote to reissue, can I amend that we don't make a motion to reissue it yet until we know how we stand? Yeah.
I'd like to see attorney talk to us a little bit about this.
I want to talk to the attorney first.
Make that determination to pull it or not pull it?
No, we want to pull it, but we want to find out how we go forward from here.
Okay, so I make a motion to pull the current grounds RFP?
I second that.
Any more discussion? I think we can pull it, I think that's legal, isn't it, to pull the RFP? I've never come across this. Brett, do you think it's legal to pull it? Okay, okay. All right, we'll come back to you on that. All right, so we have a motion on the floor, any other discussion?
Yeah, I think, in closing, I will say, I think pulling it is premature. I think, I am concerned that, Peter, I do believe you've conflated the two issues. I came here to talk about executive session, you came here to talk about the process not being fair. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about going into executive session, won't necessarily fix the issues that you're talking about, because those happened before this, and so I think we can move forward. I think it's silly not to move forward. We have everything here, and we're ready to talk about it. I think the idea, the question was whether or not this belongs in executive session. And I think that we can make that decision as a board. I just don't think it's as dangerous as people are feeling, and I am concerned that a conversation about executive session feels so taboo, and I think it should be something that as a board, we are talking about, we're actively engaged in, and it shouldn't make anyone feel like, I don't know, I don't think it should be scary, I think it should be good.
I don't think it's scary, I think it's been brought to our attention that we didn't do it properly. So we want to make sure we are doing it properly, so that we aren't called out, that we went into executive session inappropriately. So it's been called to our attention that we didn't do it the proper way from the beginning.
So why would we pull the bids?
Because our intention was to do it in executive session, because we do feel strongly about the confidentiality of it. So in order to do that properly, we need to certify this ahead of time, as we've been told now, and we will do that next time if we decide to move forward with the RFPs.
So do we feel strongly about the confidentiality, or is that what we're being told? Because the law says that we can make that determination. So do we feel strongly about the confidentiality in a way that would make us go back out, rebid, and start this process again?
I do, I know Mr. Nero did. I guess the rest of you can say if you do or don't, but I feel that it is confidentiality.
I don't feel like this part of the process is, and I think it's beneficial for the public to be able to access this information.
Okay, well, we have a motion on the floor to pull the RFP for the reasons of not certifying it ahead of time to go into executive session. I think when we have the discussion on the next RFP, we can decide on certifying or not certifying. We're kind of far in the process now to make that decision, so... We have a motion on the floor, is there any other discussion? Jen, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I just, I wish, I just wish that we could have discussed this matter beforehand, or discussed, you know, if we weren't doing it the right way, or whatever.
It just got brought to our attention.
If maybe moving forward, we, you know what I mean? Yes, it just got brought to our attention. Yes, it just got brought to our attention, I understand that.
So I guess we kind of learned something, right?
It's the way the board has been doing it all along. I wish that it was brought to the attention prior, so we weren't in this loop, in this painful loop.
Yeah, I mean, I wish that too, but it, it's, it's a step that got missed and we've now been told about it. And we, you know, there's, there's so much fine print you can find in the laws and in the things. And so it is easy as a volunteer, as board members change, to miss some of those things. So certainly we want to embrace whenever something comes up that, hey, maybe we've been misstepping on this a little bit. Let's embrace that, let's do it correctly moving forward. And, um, that, that would be my goal, to learn from something that we missed. And then to, you know, we can't look back, Lisa, I hear what you're saying, but I can't go back to what the board's done for the last 30 years and figure out which ones were missed or not missed. But now we know. And you can't continue to move on the same path forward incorrectly if now we know. So I think the best way to correct this is to back away from this one and redo it correctly. And we have a motion on the floor, is there any other discussion? All right, so all those in favor to pull the RFP and revisit sending a new one out in the future? Hi. Phil, did you vote?
I, I don't know, I don't know which, which way to go. I have to get the position filled, I don't know.
Well, we have the position filled, we have a, we have a grounds person. We have somebody currently doing that job. We just were looking at it as a way to possibly look at it, uh, savings there or is there a different way to handle the grounds? That's all we were trying to do, but we need to reassess how we go about doing that.
So then pull it, yeah.
So you're... I mean, is that clarity for you? I don't want to tell you how to vote one way or the other, it's...
No, I, I know what you're saying.
Okay, all right. And abstain? And no?
No, to pull, to pull it.
Okay, those are yes.
I'm voting no.
And Steph is voting nay. Okay. And no abstentions? Okay. And then, I don't know how that works, Peter. Do you notify them that we're not moving forward with the RFP at this point? I can, I can do it. Can you get me the contacts, Robbie, and I'll notify? Okay. And can we get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
All right.
That's a fun ending for you, Peter, I'm sorry about that.